Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, May 24, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Paul Ruzin from the Redemption Hill Calvary Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from the Early Childhood Education Associate funded by First Things First with Margie Chifo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. It's great to be with you guys tonight, City Council, City Staff and Residents. Out of the Book of First Kings, Solomon became the king once King David passed away. God came to Solomon in a dream at night, and he asked Solomon, "What shall I give you?" Solomon didn't ask for riches. He didn't ask for long life. What he did ask for was understanding and the right heart to judge his people, God's people, that he might discern between good and evil. And God was so pleased with Solomon's request because he had asked him not for long life or riches or the life of his enemies, but understanding to discern and be just. God said, "I have given you a wise and understanding heart, so that there has not been anyone like you before, nor shall any like you arise afterwards." And later on in First Kings, it says Solomon's wisdom excelled. And I pray that for each one of you tonight, that your wisdom would excel as you make decisions that affect each and every person in Lake Havasu City. Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight. We lift up tonight's event to you. We lift up this council meeting to you, Father, and all the items on the agenda that this council will take up for consideration. We thank you so much for providing a government that cares for the people and does what the people needs it to do. Our country is in a bad place right now, Father, and we need to reach out to you, each and every one of us, and ask that you would change the hearts and the minds of all of our leaders, whether they be local, county, state, and federal. We pray specifically tonight, though, for this city council, Father. Give them wisdom. Give them guidance to every single decision that they would make, that they would make those decisions with a clean heart, a clear conscience, and with wisdom and righteousness in mind. And we pray these things in the name of our Lord, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, Margie. If you want to share about your program?
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and council members. My name is Margie Chifo, and I am the President of Early Childhood Education Associates Professional Development Company. Thank you for the opportunity to share the success of the La Paz Mohave Language Development Project funded by a regional First Things First grant. If you saw the city Facebook page, as well as the press release, you saw Mayor Sheehy visiting with local infant toddler specialists. These specialists accomplished advanced professional development with Dr. Renata Zengel, an international researcher and author of Raising a Talker. This publication provided the backbone for the language development project. The project's brain-based learning games had a celebrated effect on families who frequently shared their delight with children's language advancement. Words are the nutrition of the brain. Brain-based language activities, coupled with developmental checkpoints along the way, have had remarkable results in a simple and cost-effective way. For this reason, in the final year of the First Things First grant, the language project is hoping to include more infants and toddlers in the community from private in-home childcare. Perhaps the best way to enrich many more babies is if families share a grant-funded, free Raising a Talker book with their toddler care provider. Any families interested in the Infant Toddler Language Development Project and want to include their care providers can direct message the project at Facebook, Raising a Talker again, at Facebook. Thanks again to Mayor Sheehy for his willingness to recognize these important and lasting early childhood efforts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here, and thank you for the great work you're doing for our youngest citizens in our community. Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, we will now have the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cameron Moses?
Here.
Jenny Koch? Vice Mayor Jim Dolan?
I'm here. Thanks for checking in.
Mayor Kal Sheehy?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Item 5 is Call to the Public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the City Council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Now, your comments would be limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. Again, we ask that you talk and address your comments directly to the City Council. Since the items that you're speaking on are not on the agenda, we can't have a two-way conversation, but we can listen intently. If you are here this evening for one of our public hearings, we encourage you to wait to that time, so we can have that two-way conversation based on your comments. You don't have to sign up for a Call to the Public, but we did have one citizen do so, so we'll start with Ms. Christine Simmons, and then we'll open up to others. So, good evening and welcome, Christine.
Thank you. Am I the only one that signs up? Anyway, glad to be back with you all. I love quotes, and this is a great one from Frederick Douglass. He said, "Freedom rests in three boxes: the ballot box, the jury box, and the cartridge box," which really pertains to Arizona. Anyway, we have the right to use them all, and lots of primaries are happening today. I saw the film 2000 Mules, and it showed all the cheating and the stuffing of ballot box. So, thank you, Mayor Copa, for stealing our election. Remember El Chapo? He never dreamed the cartel and drug lords would have the power they have today. They've been enabled by our government. They now control the border. A hundred thousand Americans have died of fentanyl. We need our military intelligence to fight the menace on our border. They can find out what's going on. The young Buffalo shooter told over 12 people in a chat room his intentions, and nobody called it out. He chose New York because they have the strictest gun rules. He knew no one would have a gun to fire back at him. That would not happen here, not in Arizona. I remember when the BLM and Antifa thought they'd have a parade here on McCulloch, and all our gun owner, shops owners stood out there armed and dangerous, and they left like lickety-split. Okay, just a word about baby formula. Do you know that Infamil formula was developed in 1965? Many of us were born before 1965. Our parents went home with a recipe to make formula for their babies. I did not do well with the milk formula, so fortunately, there was goat's milk for me. I think mothers need to not depend on the government and look at other sources. And I have personally sanctioned China. If it says "Made in China," I put it back down. I don't buy it anymore, even though how cute or how neat it might be. I think I want American-made. Thank you. So, let's stop depending on our government. Biden said gas prices are a transition to green. Okay, well, Mr. Biden, I think it's time for you to transition. I know 80- and 90-year-old women that have much more mental power than you. Maybe you need to transition to progesterone.
Would anyone else like to address the City Council during Call to the Public?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is David Diaz. There's a tragedy today in Texas, and I'd like to get permission from the Mayor and City Council to take maybe 17 seconds of silence. There was 16 kids that were murdered, seven, eight, and nine-year-olds. No, kids. No, it's not 18 kids. I'll tell you later. It's not 18 kids. I'm not taking the, I'm not using the killer. I'm not adding him in this list. And if we could just take 17 seconds of silence and just a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you. And it brings up a point that we're in the grip in the United States of a mental health crisis. And it's not guns that kill people. It's people that kill people. So, you're going to hear a lot of partisan stuff on the news. I heard it today after it happened already. They're coming out trying to ban guns and so forth, and people, they're using it for protection. That's why we have our guns and for sport. So, let's just keep that in mind, not jump on the wrong bandwagon. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council during Call to the Public?
Good evening. Grateful that you all showed up tonight for my meeting. Hi, Mayor, Council. I'm Bonnie Toy. And today's been a really amazing day with the stuff that has happened so far, not just in Texas, but from what I understand, on our own, very Highway 95, it has had, I believe, from what I understand, two accidents, one south of Sarah Park and one at the new traffic signal. The brand-new traffic signal has already had a traffic accident, from what I understand. And as I decided to come to the City Council meeting tonight, I decided, oh, you know, I'm going to take the highway. I'm going to drive my car. I'm going to take the highway, come down on a coma. And I noticed, just in case you guys haven't been out there at this time of night on the highway in a coma, driving, actually on the highway up the hill toward a coma where your beautiful sign is that says "Traffic Signal Active." The sun's shining right down on the letters, and you really can't see them. So, if you're not paying attention and you don't notice that, or if there's a bunch of traffic next to you when you are in the left lane, you might not notice that. And I know that you guys are having a really busy weekend, this weekend. I mean, we haven't even hit the weekend yet, and you've already had two really big accidents on Highway 95. And I don't know how you guys can address that issue, but I am pretty certain that the city needs to probably do something. And if the accident was coming up this morning from Parker toward the city in the morning, then the sun would be on that side of the light, probably. The sun may be on the sign going that way as well, since the sun rises that way, goes down that way. Just something I thought I'd share.
Would anyone else like to address the City Council during Call to the Public? All right, seeing that, we'll close the Call to the Public. Item 6 is the Consent Agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to remove Item 6.2 from the agenda, the Consent Agenda.
All right.
For further discussion.
Would any other council members like to remove anything from the Consent Agenda? All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda minus 6.2.
Okay. All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, and we have a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. And I will address Item 6.2, Adopt Resolution Number 22-3578, approving and authorizing execution of instruments necessary to vacate and convey parcel be a 20-foot by approximately 225-foot roadway located between Avalon Avenue and Lot 6 of Track 2242 Block 1. Mr. Morris?
Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Campbell, did you have any questions?
I just wanted clarification. I know that's a commercial node in the middle of off of Kiowa in a coma, Avalon, excuse me. And the one side of the commercial node, we did rezone it into multifamily, I understand. And then there's still a commercial node in the center of it. One person, I guess, bought that whole other side. Are we going to keep that commercial, or is that going back for a rezone as well?
Well, thank you for the question. I believe the property owner adjacent to this parcel is the one who's the applicant for this, and he proposes to purchase this property and then develop his, this property, as well as the adjacent properties with some sort of multiple-family project. Any sort of rezoning through that sort of process, in this case, will probably require a general plan amendment as well as a rezoning, which would be public hearing process for both of those. Those who go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation, then on to City Council. So, there's a time and a place for dealing with the rezone and/or general plan amendment. And this is the property owner's first step is acquiring this piece of property to go through that process.
Is there any possibility of a multi-use with him, or is he just perfect? He has a plan, and he needs this parcel to make his plan work? And is that where we're going, probably?
I think he feels he needs this parcel to help his project be a little more viable than it would be without it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion?
Mayor motion?
Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 22-3578, approving and authorizing execution of instruments necessary to vacate and convey parcel be a 20-foot by approximately 225-foot roadway located between Avalon Avenue and Lot 6 of Track 2242 Block 1 to William Lundee for $43,280.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, and we have a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 7, which is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is the Investment Report as of March 31, 2022. Ms. Olson included this in our Council Communication and Council Packet as well as online. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Olson? All right, they are filed as is. Moving on to Item 7.2 is the Fiscal Year 2021-22 Third Quarter Contracted Agency Reports. Similarly, Chief Doyle presented this in our packet for us on our quarterly report. They will be filed unless there's any questions or comments. All right, moving on to Item 7.3 is Announce Vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, two regular members, three alternate members. Community Resource Coalition, five regular members, two alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, four regular members and one student member. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, three regular members and two alternate members. The deadline to submit applications for these vacancies is Friday, June 3, by 5:00 PM. Anyone can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.4 is the City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Kinnison.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. A lot's been happening the last several weeks, as indicated here in all the pictures. Starting with Mayor, you attended the mural unveiling and dedication ceremony of We Are Havasu, which is located outside of the Shabby Shack Building. The artist Fred Hahn of the Havasu Public Art Group said the inspiration behind the art was to honor the London Bridge. The mural features small pictures of various members of the community. And then, Mayor, you visited the New Day School South, New Day School South off of Earl Grande, Infant and Toddler Development Professionals, and committed their completion and success of the La Paz Mohave Language Development Project, which is funded by First Things First Early Education Grant. Mayor, you served as the keynote speaker for the Elk Scholarship Night and presented certificates to several students for their achievements in academic excellence at the Lake Havasu High School. A proclamation to Starline Elementary School occurred on May 13, and that day was proclaimed as Starline Elementary's Dude Be Nice Ambassador of Kindness Month. The proclamation was presented by Cory Triasi in honor of her kind attitude and wealth of knowledge as an educator administrator in the Lake Havasu Unified School District. Mayor, you attended the ASU commencement as the keynote speaker for the class of 2022. One of the graduates was Ahmed Metwali, who's volunteers in the lobby here at City Hall. Congratulations to Ahmed, and thank you for your service to the city. Mayor and Councilmember Jenny Koch participated in judges in the Realtor Olympics about a week ago. And Mayor and Councilmember David Lane presented proclamations to two Eagle Scouts for completing their community projects to earn their prestigious rank of Eagle Scout, Aldo Preso for painting and fully stocking a first aid booth for the Sarah Park Rodeo Grounds, and Seth Crick for his project of building a personal floating device loaner station at Site 6 Launch Ramp to encourage safe boating and reduce drownings in the Colorado River. And lastly, Mayor proclaimed May 21 as Kids to Park Day in Lake Havasu City. To celebrate our Parks and Recreation Department, along with Anderson Auto Group, we hosted a movie featuring a movie entitled "A Goofy Movie in the Grass Bowl at Rotary Community Park." Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. I'd like to thank Mike Keen and his Parks and Recreation staff for the good work they did with hosting that night. A lot of positive response from the community. And again, special thanks to the Anderson Auto Group for your support and your contribution to make this happen for us. On May 11, Mayor and our City Attorney Kelly Gary, as well as Jeanne Gutierrez from our Fire Department, and Chief Dan Doyle participated in Jamaica Elementary School's Career Day, sharing information about the good work Lake Havasu City does in the community, the work they perform at their job, and the education skills that are required for success in their respective careers. Our City Clerk Kelly Williams coordinated another successful all-access Havasu Council Candidate Orientation in the council chambers here last Thursday. Aside from treating, being treated like celebrities, our council candidates received a behind-the-scenes-type educational presentation from all of our department directors and enjoyed a tour of three locations throughout the community. There's our wastewater treatment plant, our water plant, as well as one of our fire stations. A great job to you, Kelly Williams, and your team for hosting that event. Thank you. The next Coffee with the Mayor and Manager will be held here in the Police Department Council Chambers on Friday, June 3. And as always, that's from 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM. This is an opportunity for the public to come and hear some updates from the mayor and myself, and answer any questions that you may have. And lastly, a reminder that city offices will be closed on Monday, May 30, in observance of Memorial Day. Our Police and Fire Department services are unaffected. However, admin offices are closed, and all city offices will resume their normal schedules on Tuesday, May 31. Also, the Aquatic and Community Center will be closed on Monday, May 30 as well. Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Item 8, our public hearings. Item 8.1 is Adopt Ordinance Number 22-1289, amending Ordinance Number 07-873, removing the zoning, change conditions of approval for 2124 Kiowa Boulevard North, Track 2192, Block 9, Lot 3. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you so much. The subject property here is just about half an acre, and it's currently vacant and undeveloped. It's located on the south side of Kiowa Boulevard North, across from Fire Station Number 2. The abutting properties to the east are a commercial development. To the west, it's an approved open storage use, and the properties to the south are zoned to multiple family or residential uses. The zoning for the property is C2. All the properties on the east, to the east and west of this subject property, are also zoned C2. The property to the south is on multiple family R3, and the properties to the north, across Kiowa Boulevard, are zoned public lands P1, which is the fire station, and light industrial. Now, the applicant recently purchased the subject property as a C2-zoned lot to expand an outdoor storage use to the west. Upon submitting their conditional use permit application for the outdoor storage use, the property owner was advised that there were three conditions placed on the property through a rezone that occurred in 2007. In that 2007 rezone, the conditions that were attached to it were, one, no outdoor storage shall be allowed; two, all permitted uses shall be contained within the buildings; and three, a six-foot masonry wall shall be provided along the rear property line. The wall shall be architecturally compatible with the commercial buildings. This kind of leads to the question, why were these conditions of approval applied to this property in 2007 rezone? So, we'll go through a little time travel here, if you don't mind. So, here's the zoning map as it was in 2002. You'll see this entire side of the block along Kiowa Boulevard, it was zoned RM. Well, in that day, it was called R4, multiple family. Now, it's called RM. So, the entire side of that block was zoned RM, multiple family, in 2002. In 2002, in 2003, there were two properties, or two groups of properties that were rezoned from the then RM, then R4, to C2 planned development. They had some conditions of approval placed on them. At that time, the conditions of approval were thought to help act as a buffer between the abutting multiple-family properties behind and to the side of the subject, of the properties that were rezoned in 2002 and 2003. And they were rezoned as a planned development with conditions of approval. Then we go to 2007, when the subject property was rezoned. It was not requested to be a planned development. It was rezoned. The Planning Commission recommended the conditions in 2007 because they thought they would be similar to the 2002 and 2003 PD rezones and help act as a buffer for the abutting residential multiple-family lots to the south and to the lots to the immediate west that were still zoned RM or multiple family at that time. The property owner of that rezone did not ask for a PD rezone. I did not present a development plan or ask for any exceptions to the C2 zoning district. We'll jump forward now to 2016 and 18. The 2002 PD rezone was, to the west, did not develop, and those lots were rezoned from that planned development C2 back to straight-up C2 zoning. And similarly, the other project on the other end was rezoned from PD to straight-up C2. And then finally, in 2019, the lots adjacent to the subject property were rezoned from multiple family to straight-up C2, again, with no PD or no conditions of approval on that rezone. So, a recap, in 2002, that whole side of the block was zoned multiple-family residential. Today, that whole side of the block, with the exception of the very end, is zoned C2 residential. So, in the 2007 rezone, there were some conditions attached, as I described earlier. Now, attaching conditions of approval for a rezoning change is unusual request and is not typically considered good planning practice today. It's acceptable to include conditions of approval for a planned development rezone. Now, for a PD rezone, approval conditions are usually linked to exception requests to the underlying zoning district, and the applicant typically includes a site plan for the project. Approvals may then be based on the request of exceptions to the submitted site plan. In the 2007 rezone, that property owner did not ask for a PD rezone. It did not present a development plan or ask for any exceptions to the C2 zoning district. The PD zoning also designates the property as a PD, and it kind of gives a prospective buyer a heads-up that there may be some underlying zoning conditions on that property. The subject property is not zoned C2 PD, it's zoned straight-up C2. So, the current property owner was not aware that there were conditions of approval on the property that did not apply to other C2 zoning districts. So, the property owner wishes to use the property for outdoor storage. Therefore, this request has been submitted to remove the conditions of approval. Removing the condition should not have a negative impact on the area. Conditions 1 and 2 do not allow storage, outdoor storage. However, outdoor storage is currently allowed in the C2 zoning district with a conditional use permit. Impact on abutting properties will be considered during the conditional use permit review process. Condition number 3 is currently a standard requirement for outdoor storage. The Development Code includes the requirement of a six-foot masonry screen wall to screen the use from the abutting residential zoning in the right-of-way. Condition Condition 3 is not necessary since it's already part of the Development Code. Staff supports removing the three conditions of approval from ordinance number 07-873, and the Planning Commission recommended approval at their April 20th meeting of removing these conditions by a vote of seven to zero. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions of Mr. Morris from members of the council? Councilmember Campbell?
So, clarify. It was commercial, it went multi-family, and now it's back to commercial. Is this correct?
The subject property was multiple family.
To start.
Back in 2002.
The general, the original plan was multi-family. Right, I mean, the original.
The original zoning was, was multiple family RM.
Yeah, just real quick, that was in 2002. The general plan updates by ratification of the voters every 10 years.
Right.
Every 10 years. So it's different from original, 1978, but every 10 years it updates. The general plan.
Your question about the general plan?
The general plan was.
The general plan was.
Commercial.
For this area was resident, was, was commercial, yes.
Commercial, then multi-family, then commercial, and now multi-family, now commercial.
Well, it's currently commercial.
All right, I just wanted clarification of that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of members of the council? Vice Mayor Dolan?
So just to clarify, none of those other lower C2 lots have any of those special conditions. It's just this lot that's affected to that.
That's correct. All the other lots are straight-up C2 zone.
And so we're amending, would be amending the ordinance. This isn't a rezon, so it wouldn't have gone out to the neighborhood and all that?
Yes, it's amendment to the zoning, excuse me, to the ordinance. So it did, the property has been posted and notified, but the, there was no neighborhood meeting required. It's just a notification that there's amendment to this ordinance.
Okay, so notice was given and.
Because it wasn't rezoned, it's just removing those conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or a possible motion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Moses?
I move to approve ordinance number 22-1289, amending ordinance number 07-873, removing all zoning change conditions of approval for 2124 Kiowa Boulevard North, Track 2192, Block 9, Lot 3.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.2 is adopt ordinance number 22-1288, for multiple text amendments to Lake Havasu City Code Title 14, zoning development code, to add development standards, minimum density requirements, and minimum building story requirements to the residential uptown McCulloch Main Street, RUMS District, and the residential commercial and health, RCHD District. Mr. Morris.
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you so much. Some recent developments in these zoning districts have raised concerns within the community regarding development standards for these. The areas of concern are in the RUMS and RCHD districts, which are located among Mesquite and Swanson Avenues roughly parallel to McCulloch Boulevard. They're outlined here in red and blue. There are approximately 17 acres of undeveloped property within these zoning districts. The intent of these districts is to provide medium and high-density residential development, which promotes living near the medical and other basic services. It also encourages nighttime activity, spurs economic development, and further distinguishes this area as the center of the city. The current development standards for these districts allow multiple-story buildings up to 42 feet in height with no minimum or maximum residential densities and no architectural standards. Some recent developments and proposals within these zoning districts are not realizing the vision of how these areas were intended to develop. They're not taking full advantage of the increased building height and density allowed. Therefore, staff initiated discussions with the Planning Commission to address the minimum development standards. The Commission reviewed and discussed these standards at their February 16th, March 16th, and April 20th meetings of this year. The Commission recommended approval of the following five standards by a vote of seven to one at their April 20th, 2022 meeting. We'll now review some of these individually, each of these. The first recommendation is to add a minimum density of 15 dwellings per acre with no maximum density. This slide shows existing and current projects located within these zoning districts. As you can see, they all exceed 15 units per acre with an average of 32 units per acre. This is in line with the intent of these zoning districts, as they're envisioned to be the highest-density zoning districts in the city. The second, second amendment was a housekeeping amendment that was recommended to Table 2-10, correcting the minimum depth of the front yard from 20 feet to 10 feet in this RUMS District to match the 10-foot step backs shown in Table 4-01-1. This housekeeping matter makes the two tables and development codes consistent with each other. The next recommendation adds the requirement that at least 50% of the footprint of the structures with dwelling units be two stories where height allows. Adding stories will offer opportunity to increase density by providing additional units above the ground floor. Here is an example of the standard. A 1,600-square-foot bottom story, which would require at least an 800-square-foot second story. So the, looking down at the building from the top, 1,600 square foot for the bottom story, and then would require at least an 800-square-foot, square-foot story for the second story. The fourth recommendation is for structures facing the right-of-way to have architectural enhancements such as popouts, decorative stone, porches or stoops, or similar features. As you can see here, these types of enhancements will help soften the building and create a more pleasant streetscape. And the last recommendation requires doors facing the front right-of-way to have a minimum of three-foot-wide sidewalk directly linking the structure to the street. This will help encourage residents to walk to destinations in the neighborhood, reducing traffic and parking in the commercial downtown area. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there questions of Mr. Morris from members of the council? Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, Mayor. In talking with the public, I hear this a lot, and I'd just like you to kind of explain what our current code says, but, you know, they hear density in downtown and they immediately go to parking. Would you expand on what the, what our parking code would say for these developments?
The parking code for these developments depends upon the zoning district. I'll go to the zoning map if you bear with me. I'll go back to that slide. And the mixed-use UMS, excuse me, the RUMS, the parking standard is minimum of one parking space per unit, when it must be a covered parking space. And the residential CHD, then it's one, it depends upon the number of bedrooms per unit. If it's one or fewer bedrooms, then it's one parking space. If it's more than one bedroom per unit, it's one and a half parking spaces, at least one covered, and then guest parking.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Moses, did you have any?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Well, thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Moses, because I have a lot of history in this town, obviously. And one of my histories that I have is buying property on McCulloch when we did this downtown density, where I literally had to walk out of the meeting because it was so unfair to assume that we can go up 60 feet. How do I explain that? Most of the properties on McCulloch are 25 feet wide. They're individual parcels that people bought. Some were 50 feet wide, we paid more for them. That parcel went, mine went 250 feet deep. I ended up having a parking parcel behind my building that was 50 feet deep because I thought 25 is too narrow. I kind of worry about what the next person's going to do. I'm responsible for my property. The only way I could build out my building was through begging the city to go into parking in common, where they explained to me, if we do parking in common, you can build whatever you want with no worry about any parking, because if you have a parking problem, you don't have a parking problem. I had a serious parking problem. Then when I was sitting in a meeting and I was told that the person next to me that only has a 25-foot-wide lot can go up 60 feet and doesn't have to have parking because they have parking in common. That meant the girl that paid the extra money, the 50-foot-wide, put concrete on her parking lot, had to do underground utilities and 50 million things to make sure that my building was sustainable for my employees and my work. Everybody around me can now build 60 feet and use my parking lot. This really does offend me. And then we move on to this, where, oh, let's do downtown density. Let's, now we have minimum standards. Now, what I got on the phone, I was on the phone all day today with developers on McCulloch, telling me that if we start to do minimum standards, that say, if I pull a permit to, let's say, knock down my building or improve my building, I might be stuck with these minimum standards. Does that mean I have to move my building up 10 feet? Does that mean I have to put facade? You're shaking your head, but we are constantly changing zonings and codes and confusing everybody around us. We are aware that somebody just purchased a very large parcel of land, May 8th, and now he doesn't want to do two-story, but we, if we make this go through, that gentleman who spent millions and millions of dollars on his property, we don't like the small houses, we don't like the one-stories, but property rights are property rights, and government needs to understand the city's nearly built out. We cannot have the next 30,000 people to move in here, all be in high-density apartments, without concern for our traffic, our water, our infrastructure, our parking. So this is a big no for me, because as you look at it as a drone's eye, this is another one of those problems. Just like Kiowa, that lady, she re, she rezoned it to multi-family, it's up for sale now. So now that might go back to commercial too and multi. We need to stop and breathe and quit rezoning everything.
Yeah, so the comments, Councilmember Campbell, in that area is, we're talking about the residential stuff. So a lot of your discussion was on the commercial side, the mixed-use UMS, which is, we're just addressing on, on the map in front of us.
Right.
Mr. Morris is pointing to the area. So we're doing just the residential is what this discussion is, so you cannot go 60 feet in.
Oh, I know that. You can go 18 feet because you're backed up against residential, because we did fix that, that there's residential behind this one portion that we're talking about. This gentleman bought a lot of property just recently. He paid a substantial amount for it. If we, he bought it with the intention of being able to build what he thought he could build. If we pass this today, he has to go back to the drawing board. And anybody that's ever looked for a piece of property for how knows how long to build something that you want to build, and a developer that come in the community to do what they want to do, and then last minute, how long are we giving these people to get their permits in? That's a good question.
Yeah, that's a great question. So you mentioned a gentleman purchased land in mid-May. I don't know that to be true, but the planning.
May 8th.
Yeah, and the Planning and Zoning Commission started having this discussion February 16th. So it's been on public record that we've been having this discussion, as well as the zoning use to allow for, for high-density going forward. So, I mean, this is one of the tenants of local government is to ensure the zoning practices meet the needs of our citizens, as well as the general plan. This is one specific area that we're talking about this evening. But now, if, if an applicant did want to do this, so if we pass this ordinance and move forward, and somebody wanted to come through and do some, some project that made sense in their mind, and they came to the city, could they do a planned development and still be able to move forward, going through planning and zoning and then council approval?
Yes, that's always an option for a property owner. If they wanted to do something that wasn't meeting the underlying zoning district, a means to do that could be a planned development, where they would come with a development plan, as the name implies, and ask for exceptions from the underlying zoning district. And that would be, go through the whole rezon process with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council.
All I'm saying is even along that portion is where we did that beautiful sidewalk. There's seven lots there, and then we did that beautiful sidewalk right there. And there's no parking on that street either. And for the pure visual, again, it's commercial, to go up 60 feet, why we pass that is beyond. And the reason why it's never had, and none of, it's never been done, it's not sustainable. Even a build, a person's not going to go there by a piece of property, knock a 25-foot-wide building down and build 60 feet and assume that they could use everybody else's parking. It's not sustainable. And I know that we keep changing things, and we think we have, we can keep redoing the general plan, and we have a better plan because we're city government, I guess, but sometimes I just am begging you guys, let's leave this alone and let, let's just let the developers do what they're doing. We're going through a massive change in this city, and including our water, infrastructure, everything. My constituents, I was on the phone all day today, are completely against this, and I even had questions later. So that means if I remodel mine down the street, does that mean I have to be up to industry standards and go two stories when I didn't do it before? You're saying no? But again, we constantly are making our own minds. I know that we're city council, and I know we get to make all these decisions, but sometimes I just love to see things. The general plan is a good plan. The original general plan was a great plan, and we just keep on altering it and changing it. And I still believe some of our forefathers that built the city really knew what they were doing, and probably some of the smartest people I've ever met.
Yeah, so the reason I'm shaking my head, Councilmember Campbell, is just, we're talking about the residential piece. So that, that's just the residential piece, and you're mixing in the commercial piece, which is not part of the discussion. So when it comes.
It is part of the discussion, because if we don't have enough parking around the commercial right now, and we add higher density on the residential sides, increase those densities, where people are walking or riding their bikes, or whatever, it's what you hope for. But I am going to, I know you're shaking your head, I'm going to shake my head too. I understand that downtown better than anybody else. I pounded the pavement, I tried everything in the world to make that downtown work, and the way we need to make it work is, literally, a lot of those buildings would like to remodel their buildings. They can't remodel their buildings because they'll immediately be pushed up against the wall with a bunch of industry standards. Fire, safety, whatever, they're all important things, but the parking over there is horrendous. It's horrendous. And to say that if you have a parking problem, you don't have a problem, is somebody that has never really had a parking problem with 120 degrees weather outside, they haven't.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
We're kind of mixing two issues. We have a density issue, and we have a parking issue. If we don't change this right now, we have the tiny homes that are only having, that still abide by this, only have one parking spots. I have a lot of constituents that are concerned that those are eating up parking spots and where they can go. So even if we leave it the same way, we have a parking issue. So if we need to look at it from a parking point, we should look at our parking situation down there, and maybe we increase the standards that they need to have. But I think we do have a density problem down there. We need affordable housing, we need, there's, there's options we need to look into, and I, I feel bad for a developer that has to change his plans, but, I mean, I have 57,000 constituents, not just one developer that, that I have to take care of. So I, I just think to be flat-out against it just because it's bad for a developer, I mean, it, like I said, if parking's an issue, then let's look at parking, what are the options, you know, then let's, let's increase the levels. But like I said, looking at the existing units, if we can go back to that slide, you know, a lot of those already exist and don't have parking issues. They have enough parking spots. So, you know, if that, if parking's the biggest concern, maybe we can have that discussion and update some of our codes for parking, so.
Well, my point was that when we made these discussions of the high-density for downtown, including going up 60 feet, this was all included. It was all-inclusive when we discussed it. It was the commercial, it was residential, they had this big discussion on this plan. And again, they didn't listen to some of the property owners that were there, and obviously they're the ones still there, and everybody wants to improve our district, but nothing got changed, nothing, nobody went up 60 feet, not one person, because of the parking issues. And again, all I'm saying is we need to look at the whole picture again. I don't think we need to do this right now, you know? And again, with that developer that you're talking about, I, I just am a property right person that believes if I spend that much time buying it, and the Realtor, and the land, and the cost of the land, and then you plan, change my whole plan, I just want to make darn sure that we're giving that gentleman enough time to get his permits in, because he's got a lot of money invested at this point, thinking he could do what he wanted to do. It was on the zoning for that. When he bought that piece of property, that's what it said he could do. And again, we may not like it, but it's not our decision to be in everybody's business, unless you guys feel that's the way it should be. I don't.
Well, I just don't think we can always. When you're against a zoning change, you always say the government shouldn't, we should do, for property rights, we should leave property rights alone, but you have voted to make zoning changes, so then that should be all the way across the board in every zoning that you ever voted for.
Agree.
So we can't just always say, what's their rights? I mean, if I want to put a McDonald's in a residential area, it's my rights, I can do what I want. I mean, we need to work within the zoning that we have.
I agree.
And we have to make changes to it as well. I mean, we've done that a lot. That's why the general plan kind of changes.
I agree, but I've spoke to a lot of my constituents today, a lot that were even on the backside. on the backside over there, that already are only one-story and they look at the zoning, you'll see there's a pool right there. I know they can go up 18 feet, they're allowed to do that, they know that. But I'm just saying a gentleman invested money to do all those parcels to do something right, which is bring, um, homes to the community. And that's, again, I obviously am not going to win this one. I don't win a lot of them, that's fine. I just want you guys to know, this one really hurts me again because I know how disappointed I was when they took away all of my parking and said, you're parking in common. And I know now that if somebody wants to build 60 feet next to a building that I had, that they get to use my parking lot and I should be maintaining it. That's another conversation for another day on how we maintain our parking in common. And we shouldn't have potholes and everything else when one person does it right and the next person doesn't do it. So if we're doing this for the sake of downtown, I don't think we're doing it right. I don't think we did it right. That's what I think.
Councilmember Olin, did you have a comment or a question?
Yes, can you go back to the slide that shows the lots?
The lots.
All of them. Yeah. Okay, so right now, all of these properties, these four pieces that we're showing here, these owners, I, I just want to clarify, these owners purchase these, whether it was last month or years ago, in the intention that if they just wanted to put one story, they could put one story, correct?
Correct.
And now this, by changing this is, I don't like using this word, but it's pretty much forcing them that they have to be at least two stories, correct?
For 50% of the second level.
And it goes, and can go up to how high?
Go up to 42 feet in these zoning districts, unless you're abutting some single-family residential, then it's 18 feet.
So how many stories is that?
Probably three stories, maybe four if you're short stories.
So I can, I can understand where Councilmember Campbell is having issues with this too. I, I own a piece of commercial property in a different city and I purchased it years ago just for an investment. I didn't know what I was going to do with it. And I would be really upset if the city went in and told me I had to build something when I decided to go do it, to build something totally different than what I purchased it for. I have an issue with that. And I guess I had one other question that's, we haven't really talked about. On a public safety issue, is there, do we have any concerns on like our, if there was fires or something in that area? Like, do we have any concerns of what density looks like downtown?
Maybe Chief Paul Office.
Sorry, Mayor, Council? You know what, density is, I mean, part of our protection. Most of those will be sprinkler, especially being so dense and multifamily. So I don't see any concern with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this isn't a big surprise to these people that purchased this land. So the zoning currently allows this type of height to have multiple stories, done long before this council. It also is in, in and reflected in the general plan on what this downtown is to look like. This just ensures that what's in that general plan that was ratified by the voters actually occurs going forward. So that's what this does and, and you know, we have 17 acres left in this area. We, we need to get it right to ensure that we have, you know, a proper downtown area that was envisioned through those plans that are, precede all of us when they were created. Also, this is a bigger scope. This goes from a coma all the way down to Lake Havasu Avenue. So it's, it's a very large scope, more than just what traditionally we might think of as the downtown area.
Mayor, I had one, another question.
Councilmember Moses?
Are there currently any, anything like in the process, like in our building, you know, that they have plans submitted? Are we going to be like cutting somebody off in the middle of their actual plan submitted?
Yes, there are a number of plans in the process. Let's see if I can come with a slide for that for you. So there are some projects on the books in various stages of development. If we start down on Swanson Avenue for number A there, there's a two-story project there that is about eight units, that, that project has a preliminary plat approved. Now, a preliminary plat approval is good for two years. That project appears as though it might be on hold though. So there are other projects. There's one, seven units, design review approval. Design review is good for one year, gives you vested for one year from the date of approval. That one also has a final plat review. There's a number, there's a project that's one-story with 47 units on Swanson Avenue that's submitted for design review. If that design review is approved, then it'd be good for one year. There's another one up Swanson Avenue in design, excuse me, with, in design review currently. Again, that'd be good for one year if it, when it's approved. And then there's a, Swanson Avenue, there's another one for design review has been approved and a final plat was approved in 2021. So that was basically vested because of the final plats approved. And then near the end of Swanson, up from the views, there's a 66-unit project with about 42 units per acre that will come to the City Council, actually on the 14th, for a PD rezon for a two-story, single-family project, a multiple-family project. And then there's one on Moyo Drive that's about 20 units per acre, that's in design review right now. So those are the projects that we know of right now that are in the process of either review or design review or platting process, and they're almost seven acres in size. So that would be reduced from the 17 acres that we have already.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, if I can clarify that, if I can, Councilmember Moses? When you say that, that it's good for one year, good for two years, what do you mean by that, regardless of the action taken today or what is, what does that, what does that mean?
That would mean they're, they vested, so they have the right to do that plan because it was submitted before any changes you would make to the city code. Of course, changes you make to the city code generally will go into effect 30 days after you approve them unless you set them to be, go into effect after a longer timeframe.
Yeah, so all of these that you present here, besides maybe the one that's on hold, will be able to still go through the process as it's designed regardless of our actions evening?
If they get their design review approved, it'd be one year. That's what most of them are in the process.
And I just want to, if you want to look at constituents and numbers, there's seven items in front of us and out of the seven, five are only wanting one story. Because developers know what things are going to cost and they know what they can sell and they know what they can't sell. And I think they have a better clue than most people sitting up here on City Council on how to make development successful or not. And so you see it right there, you can obviously see, it's not desirable for everybody to be forced into all these new codes and zoning. They, they own that property. And if we're only giving them 30 days, we've given other people 90 days or, didn't we give 90 days for the storage unit?
Mm-hmm, yes, we did.
So why is it 30 days for this one?
30 days is what it is in code. Yeah, we made, we made a change at the council level. So that's the discussion we're having right now.
Oh, when did we make that change? Was I sleeping? 30 days?
For 90 days?
Uh, 30 days.
Oh, it's always, all of our actions go in 30 days.
But we did extend for the storage unit issue 90 days.
During the discussion that we're having right now.
Right, so we can have that discussion right now to extend it.
Correct.
And I'd really, if, you know, if, I would really like to, think it's only fair to spend, give them at least 90 days. There, I mean, when you, if anybody actually looks at those properties and sees the difference in what this gentleman paid for the intention of what he wanted to do, it would make you so incredibly shocked. And I'm sure every realtor, every banker, every investor, every, everything is not going to be happy when they find out they have to start from scratch. Or they're going to have to run like hell to get to where these people are, to get at least a year in to get what they want. I mean, this 30 days is here to stop them. That's my opinion.
So Councilmember Campbell, the project you're specifically talking about was on this list, it's already in the process, so they're not going to be impacted by the actions that we're talking about tonight. So they're located, number, letter C. So it's already included in this. These, these letters A through G that are on the screen are not, yeah, they will not be impacted by our action this evening.
How many days do they have then?
They have the year, they have after their approval process. So some of them might have longer because they're still haven't got to the final design review. So as Mr. Morris just mentioned, once that's done, they have a year from that time to, to begin.
Yep.
Okay, so this is the one, the May 8th purchase?
Correct.
There it is.
Yeah, so the, the 30 days would be for any additional property owners or 90, if that's the rule of the council, whatever that looks like, that would be for anything other than letters A through G, wanting to come forward with some sort of an application or, or project that they're going to do in this zoning area.
And for somebody else on that street that wants to pull a permit because they want to remodel or, you know, do something to one of those older hotels, are they going to be under the same guidelines as what we have here? Or how does, somebody in planning tell me how that works now? Usually every time I pulled a permit, I had to be up to code on every level that the code advised.
I have to, I don't have a quick answer for that. If you look at the code, there are certain thresholds that may have to be passed to trigger any current standards. Most of the time you're grandfathered in a legal non-conforming if you're meeting the previous development code. And there are some things like expansion of the value of the improvements. I think in some cases it's more than 50% of the value of the home overall, of the project overall, then it may have to be triggered. But I have to do more detailed look into that. But generally, I don't think these existing multiple-family projects are going to get anywhere near triggering anything that would require them to meet the new, any new zoning requirements. I think they'd be legal non-conforming. I can't imagine someone doing so much work on one of these existing projects that they would trigger that requirement from the zoning standpoint.
So what you're saying today is that nobody on this council has the hope that, too, we're going to do minimum standards for people on McCullough because a majority of those are one-stories? Because right now we have 60, I'm just saying.
We're just not, we're not even talking about that. That's commercial.
Well, it's kind of important because it's right there.
But it's not anything that our action tonight, it's just the residential area. So it's not even a part of the action this evening. We're just talking about the residential, if we go back to that front line.
You understand what I'm saying though.
We're talking about the residential properties right now, not the commercial. It sounds like maybe you're speaking about different areas.
They're worried that they're going to be stuck on those minimum standards every time they want to go remodel something too, is what, they're wondering which direction we're going. That's all.
And we're not talking about that at all. So their, their current standards today are, still exist regardless of our action this evening. This is just for those residential zoning districts, which were those four squares on your first slide.
And if I may clarify, I'm sorry to jump in there. When I say that design review is good for one year, it's good for one year of the approval date. So it needs to be approvable and that once it's approved, it's good for one year.
Well, we should also be careful about if that's something that could come before us in the future, we shouldn't be talking it now unless it's on the agenda. So we should just be careful about that. I guess my concern, I, looking at this list, I mean, there's only number A that's seven units per acre. Everything else seems to fall on that 15 and over and most of them being one-story. I mean, if that's the case, I mean, I, I do like the 15 units per acre, if that's what we're looking at, maybe we can be flexible with the one or two stories because it looks like they are able to pull it off. My, my, one other question is, I know a lot of this was also part of, because we've gotten some complaints about how these two areas blend in with the other area. I know on Magnolia, we have those huge blocks that just sit there that have no detail to them, sitting next to a single-story duplex. How would new developments, the developments like that, how do they fall into this? Is it mainly just the architectural features that would have affected something like that size?
It would be if, if these regulations are adopted, then they'd have the architectural features to abide by. They'd have to be at least, half of the, the living area of the structure would have to be two-story for any structure with dwelling units. And it'd have to have, of course, the pedestrian connection to the street. All the development standards for on a vacant lot, if it's in the area, they're allowed to go taller than 18 feet, they'd have to do at least the two stories, at least half the second level and all the other development standards.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay with the one-story, especially because if you look at the other side of Magnolia, you know, you do have multifamilies there, there are a lot of duplexes to go, to go from there to a three-story. I mean, if they're able to get that density with one story, then I think that might be something we need to consider to give on.
I would just caution you that we will have a bunch of tiny home developments in this remaining area and that's not what the intent of the general plan is or the discussion that was at planning and zoning. So that's, that's what the issue will be there. Again, there's a PD process. So if there's a development that makes sense, that's a one, only one-story and it makes sense and it goes through the permit process, goes through planning and zoning, through that public process and then comes back to council, it can still happen. It's just wouldn't be zoning by right, but it still would be allowed. So we're looking for 50% on a, on a second level that allows some creativity and shows people, developers or landowners certainty in what the goal of our community is of what that downtown area is going to look like with flexibility. So there's a PD process to allow anyone that comes forward with a great project that will enhance our community and support our general plan. That, it's, it's not a no, it's, there's a process to go through there.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you one question?
Yes.
So G, D, and C, if they are in review and they get denied, if they get denied, they're going to have to come back with what we changed today, correct?
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And they also would have the, the fallback of the PD, that they go through a PD process as I just described what that looks like. Yeah. Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, Christine Simmons. I drive down Mesquite and Swanson a lot. There's no street parking and is one and a half spaces literally written on a plan? I mean, that sounds like ridiculous to me. Catalina, everybody has a golf cart because parking's so special. So I think we really need to think about guest parking and at least two spaces if it's a two-bedroom. I'm really concerned about this and are they going to, if they have like more than 14 or 15 units or 40 units, are they going to have an association, homeowners association? So these are some interesting things.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. So the, the parking, some of the area that we can look at, just as an example that we already have in our community, is you go down Swanson and Mr. Morris is kind of going through some of them, there's, there's already no street parking on Swanson for the most part and we don't have any cars parking on Swanson. So there is adequate parking in, in developments such as El Condo, 1 and 2, Southwest Retreat, one on Magnolia, there's, there is parking on the residential side. So our, our minimum standards for parking seem to be working. I mean, that would be what I would ascertain out of, out of that. On Mesquite, there's a few that use the, the road parking as you go down, but not as you start heading down onto the west side, going basically from like the Smoke Tree to the Riviera area, there's really no street parking there and there's, there's these types of developments that are already in that area. That's kind of what I looked at when I was looking at this action that's in front of us, of how does that parking make sense? Because it is a, a huge concern, not only for us as a community, but also for future residents that are going to live potentially in, in these districts. So, yeah, thank you for your comments. Yeah, Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you. We'll interject that as, you know, planning and zoning, Development Services also has code enforcement as an arm and we have not had any code enforcement requests or complaints about parking in any of these residential areas. No one said, oh, parking has been a pain, I don't have any room to park. We don't have any complaints about parking in these areas. So take that it's worth, it seems to be maybe indicative of the, maybe the people who are renting or living in these smaller, less parked areas or less parking requirement areas, they know what they're getting into, I'm presuming, because they're, they visit the site, they, they know they're, you know, have one parking space and they, maybe they just adjust their lives likewise. Because again, we have had no complaints about parking in these residential areas. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Comment to that?
Yes.
I agree. A lot of the condo complexes have enough parking. You go around Biltwell's developments, they're beautiful, you look at them, there's plenty of parking for them. But I want you to go down to Main Street when there's even slightly an event and every dirt parking lot that we're talking about, that we're going to build on, is packed full of cars so that they can get to the downtown district. So maybe I'm being selfish and you're saying these are two separate, different things, different things. But when everybody that came into my location, the property that I bought, that I tried to protect, my own parking, uses all this empty dirt lot to park to get to downtown. So when you say that this is not a parking issue, it is a parking issue because I'm not so worried about the, the developments themselves. One or two or one and a half does work in a lot of our condo complexes because a lot of them are only 25% occupied. So that's a whole nother story. But what we do have down by what you're talking about is the Kmart building, which is what? There's no reason to worry. You could park inside the Kmart building if you have friends and go to all those El condos, and you're not going to affect anybody. But you are going to affect my businesses, not that I have them anymore, but you would have totally affected my businesses if we don't look at all of this. And this high-density situation may not be in our best interest when Swanson even got narrowed because of the sidewalk that we put in, I believe. I just, I worry about traffic. I worry about parking. I worry about all of it. And yes, these are residential, but we use these residential nodes, look at it, to park all over them during an event. And when you have, Moses, you have an event down by your place, there is not a parking lot spot to be had on the dirt lot or anything, is there?
Event parking is going to be affected whether there's tiny homes or apartment complexes, regardless. So that point doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, let's talk about private property rights and what that, that looks like. These are owned by people that are intending to develop it regardless of our action this evening. So they've been gracious enough to allow our citizens to park in those areas for events. But as Councilmember Moses said, that that will be another challenge that we'll have to address, as do all downtown areas, as you have in, in, in filling, and how that, that looks. But we've made some critical investments over the years with the Mesquite parking lot and others in this area, the area behind Mesquite as well. So we have some public parking areas, and we may have to prioritize some of that if, if the need arises in the future. All right, would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public?
Hello, I'm Bonnie Toy still, I think. I just wanted to share a quote real quick. Just making sure I'm still Bonnie Toy. I heard, and I, I heard it said to me, or maybe it was, yes, but it was definitely by a city council member. And he said, if it's predictable, it's preventable. And I think that tonight you guys are showing us a lot of things that are very preventable and predictable. I don't know what is going on on Swanson right now, over at one of those Sunset Retreat things. But if you haven't been down Swanson the last two or three days, I was scooting by it the other day, and I happened to notice that the whole street had cars on it, on the sign in the parking on the street that you just said that there was no parking. But they were all in front of those hotels, and I believe there's probably some kind of construction maybe going on underneath those places where they have their normal parking at. Well, I think that obviously, if somebody's going to build high-density things, that they know that they have to provide parking for their vehicles or people who are going to be moving in, you'd think they would be prepared for that, like, you know, parking garages. I did have a question for Mr. Morris about the, just a weird question that popped in my mind about the three-foot, what, what the heck is it with this three-foot thing that you have to have a three-foot walking path to the sidewalk? Like, how is that going to create anybody to make them want to go walk around downtown anymore? Because, oh, look, there's a three-foot, foot, walking path I can go walk on. That just didn't make sense to me.
Well, the idea behind that is to increase the, the walkability of the downtown, encourage people to go out their front door and interact with the downtown on a pedestrian, on a human scale, as opposed to get in your car, driving somewhere, parking somewhere, and then walking around. It encourages that, the person to get out of their home, and a good direct connection to the, to the street and to the neighborhood and to the downtown area. That's the idea behind that.
From what I understand, 125 degrees, people usually don't leave their homes or go walk anywhere? Well, okay, most people. I'm sorry. I do like to walk. I don't care if it's 130 out. So those were my questions was, you know, one, if it's predictable, it's preventable. Two, the walking thing of the sidewalk makes absolutely no sense to me. And maybe there's some other way you could adjust that. Three, honestly, if people are moving downtown Havasu, I don't think it's so they could go walk around all the shops downtown. I just don't.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. The area on Swanson that you spoke about with parking, they are doing, redoing their parking lot right now. That's why they happen to be on the street now. That's not a normal case. And then also that those sidewalks aren't for you to traverse around their property. It's still private property, but it's for those that live there to be able to get on and into the main street or the downtown corridors is what the intent there is. So, yeah. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Donna McCollough, Mr. Mayor and Council. I've only been a resident here for a little over 20 years. So by far, many of you have longer experiences than I do. I think that you can go any place to any big city. And many times you'll find a place that is a vibrant downtown district. And what I've seen in several places that I've been and places that I've lived, they have, they're on their main street, they have three levels. They have a retail level, then they have perhaps a business level, and then they have a residential level. And what is so great about that is for the people that need the lower income, the condos, the, the apartments, that kind of stuff, that's an area that will be developed for them. The great thing about that is it's near ASU, which will be handy for students. What I loved about it when I lived in that kind of facility was on Friday night, when I wasn't doing anything, I could sit out on my balcony, listening to the music from the restaurant, you know, down the street or right under, you know, the whole district of where your downtown area was. You know, you could see the lights at the bar if you're so inclined. But it was really great because you could in the evening, when it was cooler, get out and walk. And you could go out and walk to a nice restaurant for dinner. But it brought commerce to our downtown area. It developed, and it was a great place to go. People loved it. You would see lots of people outside. Granted, I didn't live at where it was 120 degrees when, you know, that was the case for me. But as a single person, it was wonderful. And I think it's great for our seniors to be able to get out, you know, get that exercise and just leisurely going without having to worry about getting in a car, driving someplace, parking, et cetera. So when Councilmember Lynn called me about this, I didn't understand what the whole thing was about. But I told her, you know, that I and former Mayor Mark Nixon, we talked often about making, you know, the downtown viable and, and getting more co-op with people, you know, doing that kind of business there and, and letting the residential grow out as it could. So that's just my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion. And just as a reminder, what's in front of us is some zoning changes to the downtown residential areas coming to us with a six to one vote in favor, adding five different components. One is a minimum density of 15 dwelling units per acre. Adding the requirement of at least 50% of the footprint structures of the dwelling units be two-stories, which the height, or where the height allows, excuse me, the architectural enhancements that we were looking for. So it has a nice look and feel down in that area. And then the right-of-way would have that three-foot wide sidewalk right in front of the structure connecting it to the street. And then that, the fifth one is the housekeeping item to amend those tables so that they coincide with each other. So that's the action that's in front of us. Again, these are in the residential districts of that downtown area going from Acoma to Lake Havasu Avenue. Any additional discussion or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt ordinance number 22-1288 for multiple tax amendments to Lake Havasu City Code Title 14, zoning development code to add development standards, minimum density requirements and minimum building story requirements to the residential uptown McCullough Main Street District and the residential commercial and health district.
Second.
Ms. Kelly, I can't hit the button because it was already hit. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion from Councilmember Lane? And we have a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to two.
Thank you. All right, next item is 8.3, is approve amendment number one to cooperative agreement and managed services scope of work with Mythix Inc. for Oracle Fusion Cloud Managed Services. Ms. Olson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you this evening is not an additional item. It's a continuation of what we have. We have a current support and maintenance agreement with Mythix that we need to renew and extend. And the cooperative agreement amendment is allowing for this extension and to still fit within our, the prior cooperative agreement. So we're, or finances, I can't even talk. Staff is asking for council's approval of the amendment to the cooperative agreement, and then approval of the scope of work, which outlines what Mythix will be doing and at what price. So as for the maintenance support, annual services, around $60,000 a year, and it will be allowed for five years total, first year and then four extensions. And one important note on that, we were able to negotiate a cap for the annual increases. Typically, they go, you know, up to 5%. But with the way the economy has been, we were a little concerned it could go higher. So they did agree to a, probably an annual, they believe it will be an annual 2% to 3% increase, but it will be no more than 5% each year. And with that, we'd ask for council approval, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Olson? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. So again, this is just a contract for tech support. So this runs our largest software platform that interfaces all of the different departments and communication and workflow processes for the city. And when someone has an issue on, on the team, they can just call up for tech support and get these issues resolved. And Mythix has done a fantastic job for us and has been able to make a good way for the technology platforms we have. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Are we right now, do we currently have a support service that we're using? Like, if we have problems?
We have with Mythix right now. We've had them for the past year, and they were the replacement for Cherry Road. So we were satisfied with the service we received over this past year. So we're asking for an additional five years.
I know this is probably not, I don't know if you can answer this. Like, how often are we calling them for support services?
They're called quite often, sometimes for very minor things, some for additional, more extensive help. We, we average, this will allow for us to get 40 hours worth of assistance from them each month. And typically, we have been getting, we've been using just under that 40 hours. And they allow us, they've been allowing us to carry forward any unused hours. So we've not had an issue with an overage yet.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
And for those at home that don't know, Oracle has not been the easiest to work with. It was approved by a previous council and city manager and people before us. But it, we, it was not quite exactly what we thought it was. And it's been quite a process. And now we're close to, we have it dialed in, but there still is a lot of, a lot of handholding we need to continue to dial into the city level. But we have a lot invested in it. And you'd think for a big name like them, they would have been a little bit more better, but to say it nicely. So we definitely need the support.
All right, any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Oh, did we? Oh, we are, yeah. I'm sorry, we did do that. Thank you. Yes. All right, any additional? Thank you. Mr. Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve the amendment number one to cooperative agreement and managed services scope of work with Mythix Incorporated authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents on behalf of the city and authorize city staff to execute the additional renewal options through May 31, 2027.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Moses. Any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
All right, next is item 8.4, approve the purchase and installation of two Mercury outboard motors or pre-approved equivalent from Fallon Marine LLC. Chief Doyle?
Mayor, Council, last year, we received a grant, a State Lake Improvement Grant. And for the police department's end of that, it was a replacement of one of our boats, as well as replacement of two boat motors on one of our other existing boats. We went out to bid for that boat. We put out the invitation to bid in April, and we received one responsive bidder on that was Fallon Marine for a total of $54,717.77 for the purchase, the installation, and tax. And we would like to get your approval to make that purchase.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions for Chief Doyle?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Just to point out, we pay sales tax on that. So if there's anybody running for state legislature, if they could fix that in the future, we'd really appreciate that because it's kind of idiotic. But thank you.
Thank you. I agree.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion.
Please.
I move to approve the purchase and installation of two Mercury outboard motors or pre-approved equivalent from Fallon Marine LLC in the amount of $54,717.77.
Second. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our final public hearing, item 8.5 is approve the cooperative purchase agreement with Freightliner of Arizona LLC through the agreement with the state of Arizona and purchase of a 2023 Freightliner M2106 dump truck. Mr. Young?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Asking for your approval for that dump truck for $163,259.09. It will be replacing one of Waters' two dump trucks, unit 4300. It's a 2007 Freightliner with 123,000 miles, 9,200 hours. The unit is pointed at 40 points, and we usually suggest for replacement at 32 points. It has exceeded its purchase value by about $30,000 in repairs. It's time to be replaced, so I request your approval.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any questions for any members of the council, Mr. Young?
I have a question or a statement, because a lot of times I'll vet these things, and I will tell you the good, bad, or different, indifferent. Great dump truck, great price. We couldn't get one for this price that was three years old. So congratulations, you guys. Great job on this.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Campbell. I, I think that goes to show some of the state contracts or the cooperative contracts that we're able to buy on, which provides some really great, great savings. Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion?
Mayor, motion?
Yes, please, Councilmember Campbell.
I motion to approve the cooperative purchase agreement with the Freightliner of Arizona LLC through the agreement with the state of Arizona and the purchase of the 2023 Freightliner M2106 dump truck.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, item nine is our current events. Are there any current council committee reports? All right, item 10 is future meetings. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, June 14, 2022 at 6:00 PM. It is a regular meeting, but it also will be our tentative budget and CIP adoption. And then we'll have a meeting on Tuesday, June 28, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Again, a regular meeting, and that will be our final budget adoption. And then on Tuesday, July 12, 2022 at 6:00 PM, we'll have a regular meeting, and that will be the property tax levy adoption. Item 11, are there any future discussion items?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Future discussion item. I would like to discuss the landscaping and multifamily and commercial properties, including water conservation, maintenance, I would like to discuss the landscaping and multifamily and commercial properties, including water conservation, maintenance and possible code enforcement on some of the properties that are abandoned. And I think that staff has a pretty good idea of the direction I was going. If anybody else has any questions, I'm here to answer.
Maybe Mr. Knutson or Ms. Gary, do you have any questions or, or thoughts on what it is we're looking to have as a future gen item?
I'm not sure what you mean by abandon. Some of the abandoned buildings that we have that have, where they had, they had landscaping liability and they have just abandoned the whole property in their dead temple weeds and broken pipes and geysers of water. These, as we're moving forward with the new code enforcement, I would look, like to look at possibly our code with landscaping for multi-use, but which is approximately twenty percent of the properties. What plants are we using? It's, I, I went through like, I think thirty pages of it today and I'm concerned about water. Moving forward, I'd like to see more natural plants, less irrigation, maybe less. Oh, too much.
Too much, it's just not on the agenda, so we have.
Okay, not on the agenda. I just, that's the discussion.
Does that clarify the?
The abandonment issue.
Yeah, I guess the, the question that we have on, on, from the staff side is just kind of how to tackle that, what to bring back before council. Do we involve the planning, Plague and Zoning Commission? What does that, that process look like? If it's, may, may make a suggestion, council can go in any direction that they want, but if, if we sit, sit down, have a conversation, look at what the code says and, and go over and, and some possible suggestions and what that might look like. We could draft something up, we could take a look at it, share it with other council members and, and bring it to a, a public, a public meeting and have a conversation at that point. It's a lot to bring your, it's a big discussion to just bring to the next council meeting.
I wasn't expecting the next council meeting or if it has to go in front of the corporation. I mean, the planning, you know, planning, zoning, whatever we need to do, I just would like to have this discussion about water conservation on designated landscaping and our multi-use and commercial. And how much do we need and how much do we not need?
So maybe we could do a, a work session and we could have that discussion about what our current code looks like and then have a discussion to maybe give staff more clarity based on, on the feedback of all of the council.
Whatever you recommend, because I'm new to all this, obviously.
Would that work for, Mr. Knutson, Ms. Gary, would that work if we do a work session talking about our landscaping requirements? And, and what the water requirements are for that? And then we might want to have a future discussion about just water conservation separate of irrigation, but we can have those discussions during that work session.
Yep, if it's seconded, yes.
Okay.
And we are building a lot of multifamily on McCulloch.
All right, so we do have a request for an item. I, do we, I believe we all understand what the request is. Do we have a second to have that discussion?
I, I have a question.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Is this something you've brought before staff before that they're aware of and gotten answers on? Because just to have a meeting, just because if we have a, I mean, if I have a question for them, I want to ask them and get a little more information before I bring it to the council, have an open meeting about it. I mean, maybe some of the questions you have would be answered if you brought it up to staff prior to bringing it up in a meeting. Because I know last time we talked about the pool thing and it was.
I've, I've, I understand, but I've brought it up to staff before and it's been brought up quite a bit from various people through this drought situation and concerns and including multi-use.
I was just asking because the vice, the city manager said no, so I was, like I said, I was just curious if it's, we've gone through the process, but.
And we've never had this discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it.
Okay, so we, okay, we do have a request, we have a second. We, we need to get a little bit better at the way that we concisely ask for an, an item because it's not on the agenda. We have to be careful so our entire community can be a part of our discussion. So we do have a motion, or we do have a request, we have a second, so that will be brought forward at a future meeting that we'll have. Any other future discussion items? All right, item twelve, a motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned, thank you for being here, be kind and we'll see you next time.